The chair sees a quorum. We'll call the meeting to order. Please call a roll.
Sheriff Tommy Johnson, present.
Ben Brown.
Miles Davidson, present.
Empty Berry, present.
Charlie Alexander, present.
Derek Skelby, present.
Notice that the meeting was properly posted on April twenty seventh nineteen twenty-three. Two thousand twenty-three. That's what I get for living too long. Okay, uh, since you helped me out here, uh, lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Now we're at four in the public comments. Ms. Poplin, you're recognized for three minutes. Ms. Poplin, are you in the room? I know she is.
Hello, and I'm here today basically just to mention from, I wasn't here last month. I didn't get to be here last month because I was having surgery there. Thank God I didn't get out in time to come to the meeting. Because only the Lord knows what I would have said. But when it comes to, um, people that stood here last month talking about the bozos and the idiots, I don't know who he's talking about because I'm not one of them. And then for you, Jerry, I heard you say, what you're hearing is hire Brandy today and fire Brandy tomorrow. I don't believe that's what any, what anybody was saying. What they're saying is to give the jail Tommy Johnson and let Brandy and Tony run it. And then they only have him to answer to. They don't have to come here and answer to people who don't care, like Ben Brown. And I saw when you was sitting up there and Sean Cummings got up here to speak and you laughed and you said, I don't care. And we already know you don't care. You don't care about nobody that's died in there. You don't care about what's going on in there. I wish, you know, you could have a heart, you know, a little bit to where you would care. Thank you.
Michael Washington, you're recognized for three minutes.
Don't start that clock till I approach the bids appropriately. Now then. Greetings. As always, right now, we have come to the point of the murderous, scandalous behavior of that goddamn county jail.
That's right.
You know Mike Washington gonna give it all, not like a twelfth, like a tears today. That's right. And don't give a damn about what the prestige, what you think about me because I'm an independent. I came on this earth by myself with gold, by myself because once I'm gone, I'm never gonna be. Already today, we've had five and makes this year alone. Six, let me straight, thank y'all, been out of town. And what in the hell is going on here? You people have families. You are human beings. You're no better than I, I'm no greater than you, but at the same time I have a compassion where you do not. I don't care who you are, you're stationed in life, your wealth, your fame, your fortune, your death, none, nothing else that goes along with it. Man, we have people that are dying today in that Oklahoma County House of Horror that I named it. House of Horrors, I tell you what, Jason, boy, he ain't got nothing on that place enough. You want to hear me? This here needs to be changes. Administrative changes need to be made and this diabolical wicked, harsh new environment setting needs to go today, not tomorrow, not in a minute. People can die, look at me laughed at, and at the same time making money for the wealthy. That's what you're doing. I don't want you to close it down for me. I got the canteen in there. I run the medical in there. I want one coming in to see me because that's why I make my money. I want all the phone calls, hey, come on in, I need my money, need phone calls that I'm making in here now, y'all come on. Uh, my food that I'm putting in here. The House of Horrors, that's what I call them. I started for two years straight in two thousand twenty, guess what? Say what you will about Michael Washington, say what you will about me, ain't me about me, did they? I'm still gonna be me. You understand that? Two straight years, month for month, back to back consecutively. We kept the notice on that jail and you better believe one thing, y'all not gonna bill nothing for no three hundred million dollars because like I said, the lawsuit hasn't been filed yet. But it's getting started. It's getting started. It's just not there yet.
Your time is-
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Judge.
Mr. Johnson, you're recognized for two minutes, three minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. By twenty twenty-six, I know that you, Mr. Davidson, you heard a lot of this already this morning. By twenty twenty-six, we will surpass seventy-seven deaths. That's less than, that's roughly six years when we had seventy-three in nineteen years under the sheriff's office. Nineteen is bigger than six. But if you don't, if you're not able to get, get this jail, uh, sheriff, I'm doing everything and most people are doing everything we can to get the federal government to come into AG's office to do what is necessary because it's clearly not going to happen. Those who are still, uh, supporting this jail trust, by the way, have conflict of interest. One, being Mr. Tardy Bono makes a six-figure salary to push for this and even blame the, uh, shortage of people not, uh, applying for jobs on O E T. Blamed it on family members and folks like myself. But I know we get blamed for a lot, but we are not responsible for forty-three deaths, five failed health department inspections, hiring members of organized crime, torture, letting multiple men rape a chained up woman, our DA letting that rapist go, signing fraudulent contracts to house detainees in all cities, fraudulent contracts, other rape incidences, attempted money laundering and possible other kinds of financial fraud, fraudulent statements made in public, violations of open meetings act, disfiguring of a woman's face, beatings, bedbugs, filth, forcing women to throw stillborn babies in the trash, not handing out medication or feminine hygiene products, being over seventy criminal investigations behind, and so on and so on. That's you guys. And every agency just about that has investigated, just says you guys need to go. But yet there's only a small group of people who think that they're doing a great job. And again, like I said this morning, you sound like Alex Jones, QAnon, and Donald Trump. You sound like a bunch of stable geniuses. So here's the thing, I want you guys to be able to really tell, we have a, uh, mother here, one of those who's been slain. Really want to tell, want you guys to be able to try to spin this. I wonder how you're going to do this on how she's not experiencing what she's experiencing and we're not experiencing what the facts are. I want, uh, this is going to be very interesting because how can you explain that we are going to potentially reach eighteen deaths this year? That's what the math is showing. Uh, hopefully we don't, but that's the math. And I don't care what your God, your whatever is, math is a constant. It is, it can be predicted. One plus one in this universe is two, okay? Six years versus nineteen, when the sheriff had it, it was much safer. I don't care what bullshit hyperbole you have to say, it was safer by the damn body count. You need to be abolished immediately and the federal government needs to come in here and clean house.
Mr. Falk, you're recognized, three minutes.
So a month ago, you guys essentially were incredibly dismissive of a grand jury report, a grand jury report. You acted like it's just optional for powerful people. It's just optional for rich people. It's just optional for people who are in control of lives. The truth is this, in that month, four more people have died. We're up to forty-three. There is no defending this trust. You will not give the money or the resources to the new person that is now running the jail that she desperately needs. Every dollar that does not go to that trust that needs to be there, that does not go into that jail is a potential death. Meanwhile, Oklahoma City has not paid their bill in a year. Oklahoma City, who is flush with money, they owe half a million dollars to this trust. That half a million dollars equates lives. That half a million dollars could mean less death than is in this jail right now. So I need you to ask yourselves, what is the value of a life? What is the value of a life? How do you put a, a paycheck, a, a dollar amount on a life? How do you say, we're allowing Oklahoma City, which they thanked you in an article about a month ago for allowing them to be freeloaders at the jail? For allowing them to not pay their bill. I am now on a deferred sentence for standing in a street and telling a police officer that we want them to quit shooting people and I was arrested. I have to pay seventy-five dollars a month. If I miss one payment, I go to jail. Oklahoma City has not paid in a year. Their contract expired last June and you're still taking people from Oklahoma City. Why? Why are you allowing them to still house their people in that jail when they have no contract? It is illegal. It is illegal for them to be there. They have no contract. You are incompetent. You are beyond incompetent. You are criminal. Derek, Mr. Pastor Skobie. It says in the book of John, know the truth and it shall set you free. You know the truth and you have promised us that you would disband, call for the disbanding of this jail trust if they weren't doing their job. And you know they're not doing their job.
Your time is expired.
This jail trust time has expired.
Your time has expired. Valerie Scott, yes ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm the mother of the child that was left unresponsive for six hours in the county. But see what y'all failed to realize is that you thought my child was a throwaway and he wasn't. When this occurred, I had to reach out to the community and the city people to help bury my child at the age of twenty-six. I have four sons. So in the hands of the county, my chain has been broken. But what y'all didn't realize is that when you mess with one of my cubs, just because I'm not out in the field and I'm not watching my babies constantly, I know what's going on with my children. So when y'all came after my child, you guys became my prey. I'm going after the hospital, I'm going after the city police department, and I'm staying on the county's ass. If you think that I'mma bury my child and leave here without answers, without justice, without change for the city, I'm not. Like I let everybody know, I'm retired. All I need is red bull and iced coffee and I'm on it. Me and my child look just alike. So when you see me, you see my child. My child had mental health issues. My child should have never been taken down to the county. My child was in a major car wreck. The police officer at that time took it upon himself to take my child to a hospital that passed two other hospitals. That hospital prematurely let my child go by just giving him Norcain. Norcain is not the answer for everything, if that's what y'all think. That's not the answer. Then you go on about how there's fentanyl and all the other drugs are ending up in your county jail. You need to question your workers because they're the ones who bringing in the contraband. They need to be fired. Like you told me, we are trying to work together. You did do an investigation, so it needs to brought, be brought to the DA. Criminal charges need to be filed. I'm not backing down. I have nothing but time. None of us in here is perfect. None of us. We've all done wrong. I don't want to have to think that another of my family members or my other son who resides here have to end up in this situation. It's heartbreaking for a mother. It's different for a father, a grandmother, a auntie. But when you carry something for nine months that was given to me, it wasn't given to y'all. So it's not my problem if y'all don't have enough staff. It's not my dead son's problem that y'all didn't have enough staff. So it has to stop. It has to. I'm not going nowhere, period. I'm not going nowhere. Just know that.
Sean Cummings, you're recognized for three minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, what I wanted to talk to you about today was kind of calling some misinformation about how to get rid of the trust. We've got two different sets of information that came out, one from Sheriff Johnson, which matched up with what I read in the legal paperwork and another one that came out from a county commissioner, which was absolutely wrong, which unfortunately I have shared a bunch over the last six months. Now, the correct information is that you all just need to call for a vote, which you have said you would do. Call for a vote, simple majority brings it to the county commissioners, simple majority brings it to the governor. That's it. It's not any harder than that. Now, we were told in a very public setting that a hundred percent of you had to agree, a hundred percent of the county commissioners had to agree, and then it went to the governor. So nobody ever thought this was possible. Now, I unfortunately have shared these unfactual information. So what I would like to see is if we can get a public statement out there of factually what has to happen to get rid of the trust. Um, you have very few people that are in support of it, very few. And it seems like most of them have worked for one of you up here at some given time. So it's pretty iffy on that deal. The other thing that I would like to talk about is once again, Oklahoma City. Now, the smartest guy here right now is Miles Davidson. He said make Oklahoma City pay more money. Why is it not double? Why is it not a hundred dollars a day? Who is doing the math of the cost per day to hold a citizen in there? Who's done the math? Because the math is off. Otherwise, we would have maintenance money and everything else all along. And since they're your biggest client, my understanding is way over fifty percent, double it. Make them build their own jail. If they want to put you all in the coal fire and put everything on your back when they won't give you the money to operate the jail, cut them off. No business person would tolerate this. No business person on earth would tolerate this and you all are a business. That is what it is. It is a business. So sooner or later, we got to start acting like a business and cut off your client if they're not willing to pay you enough money to take care of the people that are in there properly and within their rights of the constitution. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Bradley Saylor.
The redundancy of me coming up here again and every, everything that I've heard everyone say here again and again, and yet you still have failed to do any of the jobs. You know the decision that you needed to make for a very long time, but yet we've, we've had more deaths. We've had so many failed health inspections. I mean, the gross negligence on the part of all of you for not doing your jobs. I mean, it's not a telenovela. You can't just turn it off, you know? You guys get to go home to your perfectly wonderful homes because the decision that you need to make is going to affect your pocketbook. And so you refuse to make it at the cost of people's lives. I just know that, you know, this decision is on you, but so is the blood that follows.
How do y'all sleep at night? Do y'all even have a conscience? Do y'all have children and grandchildren? I'll take up the rest of the time. I'm asking y'all a question.
We're now at the point of the consent agenda. We're not doing, we don't have the equipment, right? Yeah, let's just mark this. Uh, for the consent agenda, does anyone care to pull anything off there for questions or discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. We have a second. Clerk could call a roll.
Sheriff Tommy Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ever you see seven I votes and no nay votes, I declare the same to have passed. Next on the agenda is a report for, from the financial officer. Is Mark gonna make that or who did? Okay, Mark, you, you're recognized if you'll come up.
Thank you. Now, I'll be brief here since, uh, the, the CFO is, uh, sick today. So I'll go over this, the revenue statement, uh, the one before you. The revenue statement for total for March was, uh, three point two million dollars. That's a favorable variance of actually two hundred and fifteen thousand. Now, most of the revenue though continues to come from the general fund of the county. Now for expenses, total expenses for February were two point nine million. That's a favorable variance in the budget of two hundred and five thousand dollars. So again, the, uh, for the month of, uh, March, or excuse me, of, uh, of April two thousand twenty-three, uh, or excuse me, it's March, jail operations produced a net profit of two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Now, that's mainly due to DOC payments. We've got payments for two months from the DOC, from housing, uh, the sentenced inmates, of course, assurance, uh, reimbursement, lower payroll and benefits expense. I'll try to answer any questions, but again, um, are there questions of, of Mark?
Seeing none, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to, uh, accept this report. So may we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Clerk could call a roll, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Have received seven I votes and no nay votes, declare the same to have passed. Now, Ms. Garner, you're recognized to give us the, your report.
Good afternoon. Today, first I want to acknowledge that we have had, um, some recent deaths. I'm limited by what I can release based on the fact that they are all being investigated as homicides until the medical examiner officially rules on the cause of death. We did have four detainees pass away in the month of April. As per protocol, as I mentioned before, they are being investigated as homicides. Uh, we are coordinating with outside law enforcement agencies and I do anticipate that there will be additional charges filed, uh, forthcoming with these cases. Um, of the individuals, there was one at the hospital that was awaiting a medical procedure and we had secured a medical O R bond. Uh, she just needed to be medically stable before we were able to execute that. And, uh, unfortunately, there was, as we understand it, an accident that happened at the jail and she ended up passing away. In addition to that, I'm going to go over some of our general orders briefly, just touch on our budget, talk about our medical O R bond releases and some admission statistics that I chair pretty much every month. So most recently, we have sent out, uh, general orders to our staff and these are just reminders, reinforcements of policies and procedures that we already have in place, just strengthening that knowledge and understanding that staff who are not following them will be held accountable. The two that we are really focusing on are, are strip searches and the, uh, side checks. So up until recently, strip searches were not performed, um, on every detainee that was entering or re-entering the facility. Uh, won't get into the reasons why, I don't really know why, uh, other than, uh, there were some legal questions that surrounded that, uh, procedure. That is a standard that is practiced across the United States everywhere. It's something that is necessary to ensure that contraband's not getting into the facility. It's something that we are currently doing. We have a few issues that we're working around as far as the facility layout. It doesn't make it easy for us to do strip searches in the point of the intake process that we need to. But we're going to make a few modifications here and there that shouldn't cost a lot of money just to be able to be, uh, those strip searches possible. And then the other general order that we're emphasizing is our site checks and our safety checks, just making sure that they all understand the importance of them. This is something that absolutely has to be done. It's something that we're cited for routinely and, uh, you know, if you don't have a good reason for missing a side check, then you're going to be held accountable for that as well. And talking about our budget, uh, we do have an update to the situation. As of today, we're looking at approximately a deficit of five hundred thirty-four thousand dollars, uh, for fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, to date, we have received a little over four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars of the one point zero six million. Uh, to date, we have received a little over four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars of the one point zero six million dollars in ARPA funds that we are expecting in reimbursement. Uh, the remaining has been approved, and we're expecting to get that in the following weeks. Our employee update, we did begin an academy today. Uh, in April, we did have twenty-nine people that applied for employment. Twenty-three were, twenty-three were invited to interview. Thirteen applicants actually showed up to be interviewed, and of those, twelve offers were extended. Uh, our applications do continue to be low, but we are doing everything we can to, uh, promote, uh, the detention center and, uh, recruit. In April, we did have four employees that were terminated and ten chose to resign. Um, it should be noted that some of these are related to us conducting a more stringent background check, uh, on all of our current staff, and this does not include the number of security clearances that we have pulled from our vendor, uh, partners due to investigative findings. To the total employee count today is at two hundred eighty-three. If all of our new hires reported today, and I believe that they did, our total number of employees will be two hundred and eighty-nine. And speaking about recruiting, uh, like I said, it is ongoing. We were invited and attended three recruiting events in April. The first was Rose State. It was specifically for veterans. The second one took place at O-triple-C, uh, for the spring jock fair, and the last one was just this past week at Francis Tuttle Botec. Uh, all events were pretty well attended. Uh, we've received several potential employee applications. The last event in particular, we handed out every application we had, and we ended up having to print more. So, I'm very hopeful that that is going to be, uh, a productive use of our recruiting time. Because it is the first of the month, I wasn't able to dive deep into our medical ORs and find out the status of every single person. So, all I can tell you at this point is that we had identified twenty-nine people in our custody that were eligible for or needed a medical OR based on their medical, uh, issues. Uh, and of those thirteen have been released. I know some of them did bond out. I know some of them were granted. One is, one specifically, we worked on for quite a while, uh, and then some of them were released to other holds. We will continue working on these. I just want to remind everybody, uh, that we do have people that are in our custody that are very sick. They are suffering from a number of grave conditions, everything from cancer, HIV. Um, we have people that have diabetic complications. We have people that run the gamut. We have people that have significant addiction issues. This isn't on here. I just kind of want to mention this. When we have people that have addiction issues and they come in, especially when they're addicted to opioids, them not having that drug on board for even a week, it reduces their tolerance level. And I understand the importance of trying to interdict all of the contraband that's coming in based on that alone. People are at a much higher rate of, uh, uh, much higher risk for overdosing, um, and it being a deadly overdose when they haven't had the drug for a while. I just want to recognize that. As far as releasing and booking, we released one thousand nine hundred twenty-one in April. In April, we also booked one thousand nine hundred and seventy for an average of sixty-four bookings per day. Those numbers are in line with what we're seeing on a monthly basis. We did see an average population of one thousand five hundred sixty for the month compared with April of two thousand twenty-two, where the average population was one thousand six hundred seventeen. This morning, our population was one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven. The slide just shows a few of our general demographics. Um, they're the top ten charges of our current population. The two highest are going to be carrying a firearm by a convicted felon, uh, felon, followed by possession of controlled substance. The third highest is just holds for other counties or agencies, followed by assault and battery. If you break it down by crime type, the individuals in our custody, uh, have been charged with nearly one thousand four hundred felonies and nearly one thousand misdemeanor charges. Uh, fifty-one people have been identified as military. Keep in mind, this is self-reporting numbers. Uh, three hundred and three people have been identified as homeless, and the average time to be booked into custody is right at about an hour currently. The last thing that I want to touch on is, uh, an event that some of my staff was invited to. It was a powerful day for the women that, uh, showed up. Uh, we went to Re-merge, uh, for their weekly meeting. It's celebrating life's achievements, progresses and successes. Uh, when we first walked in, uh, with our staff, the women were very excited. They were crying. They came up. They hugged them. And for me, that, that sent a message to me that our staff are doing a good job. If, if they weren't good employees and if they weren't making a difference, then the women would not have accepted them in the manner that they did. And so, I just wanted to kind of recognize that, and, um, I think it was very important for them to see the outcome of some of the people that we deal with because we see them at their lowest points in their lives. And, um, being able to see them sober and thriving is kind of a reward, and, and it's something that I'm going to continue sending more of my staff to. I think it's very important. Other than that, I have nothing else for your report. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Other questions of Ms. Garner?
I do. Um, you mentioned the person who was taken to the hospital that had been medically OR'd for their return, and you said there was an accident in the jail. My understanding was that person was taken to the hospital on a Sunday afternoon. It was Monday at four AM when they fell in the hospital and hit their head. So, were they injured at the jail or were they injured at the hospital?
They were going to the hospital for, uh, just a medical procedure, something that they needed in order to become medically stable, in order to be, um, I have to be careful about what I say, in order to be, uh, taken to, um, the place that the medical OR, uh, designated.
I, I understand. You, you said in their statement, they had an accident at the jail.
They did have an accident at the hospital, so we didn't.
So, it wasn't at the jail. It was at the hospital. That's what I was trying to clarify.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Brandy, your, your numbers up there show three hundred and three homeless. Is that the trend? Or is that an abnormality? Was there something that caused that spike? What?
I'm not sure. We're going to have to look at the numbers, and that's something that I want to look at when we get back. I just found that a really interesting statistic when we have such a high number of people that are homeless.
Especially since we're about to hear from Mr. Tardi Vono that they did a, uh, point in time count, and they showed a hundred and sixty-three. So, that's almost double.
I would agree with that. I think, again, these numbers are self-reporting. And so, to get an accurate count, I think maybe the point in time count, and I don't know when that was conducted either, um, but.
January twenty-sixth.
Yeah. So, I, we'll, we'll have to look and see what the causation of that is. Barry.
Um, we pull up the slide again of the people that were booked in and why they were booked in, or what their charges were?
Sure.
Please. Uh, when that says possession of a controlled substance, is that referring to trafficking, intent to, uh, deal or just simple possession? Or is it a combination?
That's a good question. Mark is the one that pulled those stats. Yeah. It's all of them, so it'll be any level of possession.
And we have paraphernalia. Are we having conversations with the city about the fact that we know we're understaffed? That's why we're doing all of these fairs, the job fairs. We're tremendously trying to go through and, and attempt to put in programs, but because we're understaffed, are we having any conversation about some things that are being brought to us as far as misdemeanors? And where we are right now, and maybe talking to them about what we, you know, they could agree on that'd be appropriate for not booking people into the county jail. We talked about someone that was riding a bike wrong way up a street. I don't find that a good use of the county jail. Do we have any conversations about, since we have no control over it, maybe some things we agreed on of what we bring people in for at this point in time while we're trying to get a staff that's workable?
Those conversations have been had. Um, they've been provided with some numbers, but, um, I expect that those conversations will be ongoing.
Something that will make you even sicker is that over fifty percent are brought in on warrants. Though, those are their underlying charges. The warrants are for failure to appear, failure to pay. So, they were already out and not necessarily committing another crime at that time. Some were, but but over, over fifty percent were brought in for warrants.
I, 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 I understand. Uh, that was the point of my question. That's why, why that that would be brought into there, and I think especially while we're negotiating being paid, um, for the number of places we fill, uh, the great percentage are covered by the city. Uh, they are our partners, but they have to be our working partners in this situation, um, realizing where we are.
Completely agree.
So, a little bit deeper dive on that, uh, the breakdown of charges by crime type, misdemeanor versus felony. How many of those are stacked? How many of those are the same individual with a felony charge and a misdemeanor charge?
I would say any of them that have a misdemeanor that were booked in by the city.
So, you're saying most of the nine hundred ninety-three or ninety percent of it?
Obviously, it's an assumption at this point, but it's, it's a safe guess.
I think what's concerning me, and I don't mean to speak for the commissioner if I'm not, but we have traffic, trafficking up there, which we all know is a felony. That's a hundred and seventy people. But when I see possession of a controlled dangerous substance at two fifty-two, simple possession now misdemeanor, state above.
Brandy, uh, under the holds, is that a single charge of just a hold or are there companion charges to go along with those?
So, it, holds could be meaning anything, and keep in mind, all of this information is disaggregated. It's not, um, they may have a hold, but they may also have a state and a city charge. Um, those are just for people that might be being held for another county or another state.
That's what I needed to know. There are companion charges.
There could be. Yeah, there could be some other charges.
Do all of our other municipalities that book into the Oklahoma County Jail, do they also do municipal charges as well as felony charges? Or is Oklahoma City kind of a rarity in the fact that they're doing municipal and felony?
If they have city charges, they're independent of the state charge. They're completely different, and a lot of times, it's just a ticket.
Is there a? Let me ask you this. How was it done in Cleveland County? When there was a municipal along with a felony charge?
It would be separate charges. There's, there was no.
They write them a ticket and put it in a folder, and they get it on their way out. It's my understanding, right?
That's correct.
Do we do similar or what do they do with the, if the felony charges get dropped?
Then they book them in on the city charges.
Okay, so they are booking them in on city charges. They're not immediately dropping their charge?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a motion to accept her report? So move. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Clerk could call a roll, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Have received seven a-votes and no nay votes. I declare the same to have passed. Now, for item number six, uh, Jeff Alma, you have a presentation. Now, we've had this presentation before at the request of Sheriff Johnson, and this is. Okay, okay, good.
Thank you.
Uh, so, yes, Mr. Brown, to acknowledge, uh, your, what you were saying. I believe this was something evaluated in the past. I think that was before my tenure began. Um, I'm not sure of why it wasn't explored further at the time.
No money.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Um, so, just real quick, let's talk about the money then, since that's obviously going to be the biggest hurdle we have to get over to get this sort of technology. Um, it's going to cost to do, uh, for fifteen hundred people, it's going to cost roughly three million dollars a year. Um, if you break all that down, that's about six dollars per inmate, per day. I am, my recommendation would be let's add that to the daily rate that we charge municipalities to hold their arrestees. So, if we can, we can do that and they cover the cost, I don't see any reason not to do this. The reason we're bringing this forward is we've got, uh, a huge problem that everyone today has pretty much talked about. It's the in-custody deaths. We would like to reduce that in any way possible. Um, Mark and Brandy's talked about it. They've been on really aggressive, uh, recruiting campaign over the last month or two. Um, the staffing numbers are what they are. Uh, so.
Go ahead, if you would, and explain what we're talking about here and what it does.
Sure. So, this technology I'm talking about, this is, uh, a heartbeat monitoring solution that we would basically place a bracelet or anklet around, uh, the ankle of each detainee that would monitor their heart rates, and if it, uh, goes above or below a predetermined threshold, it would send an alert to staff. Uh, soon, the sooner we can get alerts that we know someone is in distress, the faster we can respond, the more that increases the likelihood that we can save a life.
I was always excited about this program. Um, the reason why I brought it forth when I did, um, I think you have to re, really retool your mindset and get out of a reactive mode and get into a proactive mode. And I think, um, at least it's my belief that something like this gives us that ability to be proactive, and so I fully support this. I wasn't told it was money. I was told it was more because of the infrastructure of the jail and how it's set up. It was, uh, the reading, the ability for, uh, the device to read back to, uh, the main station was, was, um, the issue for not being able to go forward with it. That's changed. That's, that's perfect.
Sure, and, uh, like I said, I wasn't around the first time they did that analysis. Um, we did revisit it, uh, a few months ago, uh, when they came through and re, redemonstrated their technology, which they have made upgrades and improvements on since that initial one. Um, we tested it in every pod and every cell, not every single individual cell, but uh, we picked the furthest cell from the central, uh, part of the pod and tested the distance, and it had no problems communicating at that time. So, as far as the communications and all that, I believe it's, the technology is ready to go.
That, that is correct. The, uh, the, uh, devices work. It was just that we didn't have the funds to
Okay.
Part of it.
Perfect. Well, this is a, a great program, and I, I really, uh, you know, I really endorse it. Uh, I think this is, uh, the mindset we need to adopt, especially in our facility.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
I, I too agree with the, the, the thought about being proactive. These are actually the things that I've actually looked at in the past and done a lot of research about. These will help us immensely. My, my question, and Brandy, this may be one for you. Is this an option one or option two or option three? There's three different options that you're presenting here. Um, one is obviously the cheapest at two hundred fifty, but it's only for booking.
That's right.
Two is the high risk plus booking.
Correct.
And I don't know if you've seen the county budget. I, I mean.
Sure, as, as far, if we're talking about dollars, getting this from the county, I completely understand. It's, it's not feasible.
But I loved your idea about adding it to the contracts and.
I think that's the most realistic, how we go about doing that.
So, if we did option three, we did an entire population. What does that look like? When you, when you do three and a half million dollars, what does that look like? What, how many bracelets is that?
That's, that's for fifteen hundred, uh, bracelets. Uh, each device costs two thousand dollars per year. That's a subscription-based, uh, price. Um, like I said, if you do the math down, that's like five dollars and forty-seven cents a day.
Got it. Have we, uh, Brandy, have you thought about, or have you explored putting this on the contracts for the next FY?
We're looking at, yeah. We're, we're looking into it. Um, the biggest thing is going to be funding.
Yeah.
I think there are possibly some grants out there that could help pay for this, but the problem is going to be we're going to have to find a way of, of permanently funding it, um, because grant money will run out, but.
Yep. No, I think that's a great idea. If we could kick it off with like a DOJ grant or something like that, is that what you're thinking? And then we could add it to the three and a half million to the contracts, because my understanding of the way these work is it'll also allow us to know that if there's something else going besides a medical issue that we need to go look at, such as people that are congregating together.
Congregating fights and a lot, any, anything that's going to raise your heart rate or drop your heart rate. We'll, we'll identify medical issues in people that they may not know of.
Yeah.
Like, uh, irregular heartbeat. We'll, we'll identify medical issues in people that they may not know of, like, uh, irregular heartbeat, et cetera.
No, this is absolutely, and I'll, whatever we can do to help you apply for grants or whatever.
Well, I love the idea of, of assessing all the cities who bring, uh, people into our jail. At present, we only have about twenty a night who are there on only city charge, only city charge out of fourteen hundred. Most of the municipalities also have an accompanying, uh, state charge misdemeanor, and we are obligated to take in people on state charges. And I don't know a way to charge on that unless.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, like Mr. Alexander said, we're, we're asking for our partners to be better partners.
I like that.
Are there other questions? Okay, do we have a motion to, uh, accept this report?
I'll move the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Sorry, Sheriff.
We have a second, you're fine, you're fine, uh, clerk could call a roll.
Sheriff Paul McHale?
Yes.
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 Yes, having received seven I votes and no nay votes, I declare the same to have passed. Uh, now, I saw, I saw the speaker here, Speaker, are, are you here to make a presentation from the advisory board? Okay, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the trust, I, uh, think I wanna go in reverse order. I, I, uh, have shared this very publicly with the Citizens Advisory Board, but I feel like the public and the trust should know this as well. Um, our leader, Brandy Gardner, uh, spent the entire weekend of Easter weekend advocating for the release of an individual in the Oklahoma County Detention Center whom she felt like needed medical attention over detainment. And when I say that she spent the entire weekend, she spent the entire weekend starting at about four forty-five on Friday afternoon and didn't stop until midnight on Sunday. Last week, Director Gardner was making phone calls and coordinating services until nine PM on at least two different nights last week, advocating for the release of an individual that she felt like needed medical attention over detainment. It's becoming a part of who she is, she goes above and beyond, it is beyond horrific when we lose a life, any life. But I don't want the trust to know, and I know that you know, Sue Ann, you're a part of these conversations, you're working just as hard as anybody. I don't want anybody to think that it's not because of an effort and not because we're, we're not trying to get people in the placement that they need to be in, because it's happening during hours, after hours, on weekends, and literally around the clock. We have the opportunity to go in once a month to meet with men and women who are detained at the Oklahoma County Detention Center as a Citizens Advisory Board to include their voices in this conversation. The, the purpose is to create communication, ongoing communication, to seek input, to gain insight, and to make sure that those who are closest to the pain are included in the process to make improvements. The following responses were obtained from those that we've visited with on April sixth of last month. I've also emailed you these responses, because I think sometimes it's easier to have these in writing. And Mr. Chairman, as we have discussed, the purpose of this and other information that we are gathering from the public is to keep you up to date in real time of the conversations that we're privy to, but to also use this as a basis to, to develop a set of recommendations, um, official recommendations that, that the trust can either accept or reject. But here's what we heard on April sixth. We spoke with both women and men. The women told us that we spoke with that the bug situation, the bedbug situation is improving. In fact, only one of six women that we spoke with said that she had even seen a bedbug since her time of admittance into the jail, and it was only one. All of the women reported positive healthy interactions with staff were occurring. However, two of the female participants indicated that a certain male staff, and I don't know this person's name, made them feel uneasy, uncomfortable, and a bit nervous based on the way he looked at them. The women indicated a more formal orientation process that includes information on how to utilize the kiosk and the process for making phone calls to family members, the shower schedules, how to obtain hygiene packs, programming options, food schedules, and things of that nature would be very helpful when being processed into the detention center. At least two of the women stated that more faith-based services and programs are needed. The women reported that the quality of the food, and this is their word, is excellent. First time we've heard that, the quality of the food is excellent, but the portions are too small. One of the women stated that the lack of communication is stressful and cited an example of her having to remain in her cell um, and not being allowed to, to, none of the pod was allowed to be out because there was a behavioral issue, but she did not know what that behavioral issue was or why they were not allowed to be out of their cell. And she said the lack of communication caused her to feel alone and stressed. Several of the women reported that the kiosk provides relevant information, but not everyone knows how to utilize technology or access that information in a timely manner. Many of the women reported not knowing the status or the timeline of their pending court case, and they would like to have that information. One of the women stated the need for eyeglasses and felt like access to vision care was somewhat limited. Finally, several of the women said it would be wonderful if they could just wear regular clothing from time to time. The men who we visited with, who reside at the detention center, reported that the bedbugs continue to be an issue on their pod. They also stated the need for access to additional hygiene products and requested the opportunity to clean their cells more regularly. That's what they wanted, the opportunity to clean their cells more regularly. I asked if I could bring my teenage daughter in to visit with them. The men stated that the quality of the food is good, but again, stated that the portions are small. They stated that a lot of the men feel hungry most of the time. The men said improvement in conducting routine site visits would be helpful in creating a sense of peace and improved health and wellness safety. They explained that more consistency in conducting site visits would result in staff knowing if someone has a mental health need or a physical health need. They reported interactions with the staff is generally positive, but can vary from staff to staff member. The men stated that increased access to phone calls in connection to family members and loved ones would also be helpful. The men that we spoke with felt like that they are not getting out of their cell enough and articulated that they normally are out of their cell two to three hours a day twice a week. They stated there is little limited programming available and expressed a desire to, uh, for access to more pro-social programming. The men indicated that there is limited diversity in the spiritual support that is available to them, or perhaps that they are just unaware of how to access more diverse options when it comes to spiritual care. The men can, communicated that more respect and open communication would boost morality, morale, and make them feel valued. And then finally, the men shared with us that improvements inside the detention center are underway. They expressed a strong desire that they feel like things are moving in the right direction, and they also wanted to express their appreciation to the jail trust for being included in the process to make positive changes. That's a report from those that we spoke with on April sixth. Just a couple of, couple of, I'm sorry, just, if, if I may, just, or I can take questions right now.
No, no, you're good.
I, I just have two, three other things, wrote very quickly. Um, the last meeting that we were here, we talked about the idea that we are exploring, um, with Director Gardner and her staff, the opportunity to include some men and women who are being detained at Oklahoma County Detention Center in some job training programs while they're being detained. I just want the trust to know that we have worked every day on making that a reality, and I fully suspect in the next two to three weeks that will become a reality. Uh, men at the Oklahoma, and women at the Oklahoma County Detention Center will likely begin to have access to warehouse certification training, culinary certification training, uh, inventory, distribution and logistics, uh, certification training, and that's where we're gonna start, and we may even go up from there. Um, it's in collaboration with the Regional Food Bank of Oklahoma, we're working out travel, um, logistics right now and supervision and that sort of thing. But I also want the trust to know that, um, you guys are a body of action. And when we last talked about this, Commissioner Davidson said, hey, that would be a really great idea, and he was aware of a federal grant called Pathway Home. And he said, why don't we try to apply for some additional funding so that when we get this up and going, it can be available to more people who are detained in the Oklahoma County Detention Center? We worked feverishly under his grant writer, uh, her name is Nikki, and she is brilliant. And we have submitted, the Oklahoma County has submitted a grant to the federal government to increase and enhance job training services for individuals who reside at the Oklahoma County Detention Center. The other conversation that I want the trust to be aware of is in our, uh, CAB meeting and our Citizens Advisory Board meeting, Director Gardner had reported that in the intake process, she had started asking the question of, of, of the men and women if they had, um, their high school diploma, and there were quite a few, there are quite a few who do not. Uh, she had expressed to the, the Citizens Advisory Board that it would be a desire of her in time, of hers in time to make sure that ISAT or GED training and testing is available to individuals who may be at the detention center if they would like to have access to those services. Uh, we have since met with, um, Metro Tech, the superintendent at Metro Tech, who has a grant and the infrastructure in place today to provide those services free of charge to individuals inside the Oklahoma County Detention Center. So again, space and, and, uh, logistics are being worked out, but I just wanna say that, that, that some really positive things are right in front of us. Next thing I would just tell you is that, and I wanna remind us all, and this goes without saying, but there are occasions where we celebrate, um, that we don't even think twice about because we're, get to be with our families and we get to be with our community and so on and so forth, but not all of the holidays that we celebrate are pleasant for those who are separated from their families. A very important, uh, holiday is coming up this month, it's called Mother's Day. And it's a tough time for moms who are separated from their children, so, uh, CAB is, is thinking through some, some things that we could do to at least express to the women inside the Oklahoma County Detention Center that we're thinking about them, that we're pulling for them, uh, that we're supporting them as best we can, and that we haven't forgotten them. So we just wanna make sure that you all are aware of that. And then the final thing I would say to you is, last week, the weeks were running together, I had the opportunity to speak at a national conference of state legislatures meeting. It's NCSL, Senator Brown, you'll be very familiar with this, Chad, you'll know all about it. Uh, NCSL, and I got to tell a group of legislators from across the, the country, the question was asked, what is the bright spot? Where is the struggle? Where is the work? Where is the energy being expended? Where is the collaboration occurring in your state to really improve the situation for families, individuals and families that are impacted by the criminal legal system? And I said, well, the struggle is real, but so are the efforts, so is the sincerity, so is the work, so is the leadership. And it has to be around what's happening in Oklahoma County and our detention center. And I got so many questions and so many affirmations from, uh, the dedication and the work and the energy that you all are putting forth. And I just wanna bring that to you and also say, thank you.
And Mr. Speaker, I wanna say thank you for your many, many, many years, twenty or thirty years, uh, hard work in, in this area. And I wanna say thank you to you and the Community Advisory Board, the officers who work with you and, and serve on that. So thank you, are there questions from the trust members? Other questions, do we have a motion to accept this report? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, clerk, call or roll.
Sheriff Billy?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mary?
Yes.
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 Yes, having received seven I votes and no nay votes, I declare the same to have passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, guys, the father of the slave just got here, he would like to speak. The father of.
Okay, please have a seat.
This is the father.
Please have a seat. Please, would you sit down?
This is the, this is the father, he has, he's a blue collar worker, he couldn't just take off.
Do you want me to ha, do you want me to have you removed?
Then have me goddamn removed for standing up for what's right. Boom!
Sir, we, please come and address us and stop these idiots from, from speaking.
This is the father of the fucking murder.
I'm talking about you.
Fuck you!
Sir.
Cause I have the balls to stand up for what's right.
Would you come to address the, the trust, please, for three minutes? Yes, sir, please.
I'll, I'll make this kinda quick, um, I drive, drive a school bus, so I had a hard.
Drop off some of y'all down the.
Had a hard time finding a spot for my school bus out there, um, on, um, what was it, April eighth?
April the, um, seventh is when they had him at the county.
Yeah.
We got the call.
I received that phone call, one of the worst phone calls I ever had in my life. Um, Donald Latrell Kirby was brought down to the, uh, county jail. And, um, Latrell, he wasn't a per, he wasn't a perfect person, who else?
None of us.
Who else? Um, I really believe that he, had, had he not been in that place, Latrell would be alive today. You know, I'm just now finding out that they are, they are calling this like the worst jail in the country.
In America, and we're not even in a third world country, that's what the whole.
Why? Why? You know, I, you know, I don't know what to say, but I, you know, I miss my son. MT Berry, your, your dad was, he, he, he was preaching at Mount Carmel Baptist Church, that's where I attended, that's where Latrell attended when he was, when he was a young boy. You know, funny thing about it, when he was going to church, he thought that, he thought that, um, Pastor Free was God, he wanted to sit up there, but he wanted to sit up there in the pulpit with God. Better tell him, it's not God, that's Reverend Free, he, he's a preacher, but he let him sit up there with him. And, uh.
And that's hard, like I said, my child was in the door. He might have had mental health issues and going through things, but that little charge y'all just saw on the board, those are petty crimes. If you know that your staff. If you know that your staff is not accountable and you don't have enough staff, why do y'all keep putting people in jail for petty crimes when you can have them to come to court? That behooves me. It makes no sense. And you're talking about Mother's Day to the gentleman who just got up here? Who's gonna tell me happy Mother's Day?
Let me-
Who's gonna tell me that?
Let me just say this to you, sir. Our hearts ache. Our hearts break when someone is lost. We, many of us have lost people to this disease. We know what it is. So thank you for your time, and again, know that we are truly, truly sorry.
Well, if y'all sorry changes-
The next item on the agenda is, uh, the next item on the agenda is a resolution to set the election for the chair and vice chair for our meeting in June.
Whole life in Atlanta. My whole life is in Atlanta. I had to come here and leave my life behind. See, when y'all leave, y'all get to get in y'all cars and go home. I'm a stray away. Them same homeless people that y'all talking about, that's my status.
We have-
Whatever for my child.
We have an item on the agenda. We have an item on the agenda to elect a chair and vice chair of the trust at our meeting in June. Do we have a motion to adopt, uh, this resolution? Do we have a motion? We have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second? We do have a second. Clerk will call a roll. Please call a roll. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Ever received seven aye votes and no nay votes. I declare the same to a passed. And, uh, then at the next meeting, you all will elect the next chair and vice chair. So let the, let the campaign begin. For item number nine, Tim Tardibono, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, we can't have a meeting, we have no decorum. I can't hear what people are saying at the podium.
Would, would you, would you just remove him, please?
I support free speech, and the most important thing about supporting free speech is even speech you don't wanna hear. I don't, when they have their three minutes, I am more than willing to listen. I cannot think through, hear what other people are saying. We're taking a roll call vote, we have no decorum, we, we don't have decorum, we need to stop the meeting until we have decorum.
Let's, uh, let's just, uh, let's adjourn into-
Mr. Falk, I'm talking about you. You've had your three minutes several times. I give you that respect. I would like to hear from the other people at the podium.
We're going to adjourn into executive session if I can get a motion, uh, from the trust. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
We do have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please vote aye. Those opposed, vote no, the clerk will call a roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. We're now in executive session.
Seeing a quorum, do I have a motion to return to open session from executive session?
Motion to return.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. Those in favor of the roll, I, the clerk, will call the roll.
Sheriff Stobbe?
Yes.
Angie Gary? Ted Alexander?
Yes.
Miles Davidson?
Yes.
Bobby Johnson?
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes. Having received six I votes, is that right? Six I votes, no nay votes, that declare the same to have passed. Now for matters discussed in executive session. Do we have, do we have a motion?
Item sixteen is the highlighted one currently, so I'll make the motion to hire Chief Brandy, or higher Brandy Gardner is the chief executive officer of the Oklahoma County Detention Center. And put a stipulation on it that you allow us to help you with providing you a mentor from Sheriff Johnson from Middlesex County, correct? There's going to be somebody that we can reach out to, not only yourself, but anybody else and kind of help us grow into the type of situation. So that's my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. Are there comments from, from the trust? Seeing none, the clerk will open the roll.
Sheriff Stobbe?
Yes.
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 Miles Davidson?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Having received seven I votes and no nay votes, I declare the same to have passed. Now that brings us to item nine with my apologies to Mr. Tardy.
Do we need to discuss the other items, make action on the other items?
I don't think so. Didn't have any other items. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Tardy Bono, you're recognized.
Good afternoon. On the agenda, I actually want to address the planning of new institutions process, P O N I. That is a program by the DOJ's National Institute of Corrections. It is a training program. They come in to help in the design phase. They will be here June, Monday, June twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. As we get that agenda finalized, we'll want to share it with you all so you all can determine who, who of you all would participate. Either, there's two ways to participate. You can participate all three days, which we will need someone from the trust involved in that, or you can come and go through other opportunities. We'll finalize that out, but just for your calendars, June twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we don't do anything. The National Institute for Corrections comes in and runs the whole three-day training. We just have to give them a venue, so we are working on that. And if you have any questions on that, let me know, but I'll provide you that agenda as we get closer to that June twenty-sixth time. Now for the quarterly report, you should have a physical copy. The digital is on the screen, and I'm actually going backwards, going all the way back to page nine, to the very last page. And the reason I wanted to start here was because I wanted to make sure we had time to give credit where credit's due to the now director, Garner, and her facility staff. So what the picture shows you is on the left, number five, is what the current jail site check window looks like. So we've talked a lot about the importance of site checks. That is the level of the window that you have to do site checks on. The maintenance staff recognize the difficulty with doing site checks. The maintenance staff recognize the difficulty with doing site checks with that limited window that is all over the facility. And so they came up with a new refitted door number six where you can see how much larger that window is and so that you can have a more clear and effective site check. So, congratulations for them to figuring it out and making the necessary changes. Unfortunately, the time it takes to make those changes between staff and materials is extended, so they are focused right now on the thirteenth floor, mental health floor, medical floor, suicide watch, those highest levels that need those site checks most, and then as time allows, they'll go through the rest of the facility. But I think it's important, as we talk about the current design challenges with the current facility, that people can see for themselves how difficult those site checks are versus the changes that are being made, albeit slowly. It's still important. And so, the juxtaposition of that old cell door with what we're working on, on the new cells, and that's number eight for the new jail, you can just see the dramatic difference, especially in that middle picture, because that's what it will look like in a minimum or medium security wing. And you can see there's the outdoor light coming in, the doors and the windows up on the pods are more open. And so, the ability to do site checks and to have better atmosphere within those pods are going to be much better in the new facility. And so, where are we on that? The bond, the Board of County Commissioners have gone forward with the bond process. Those bonds should come in in mid to late May this month. The APR on those was three point two-three, which was below the four and a half percent we anticipated during the campaign. And the, the amount of the funding is forty-five million, which should be the first set of funding to start with site acquisition, architect, and construction management contracts, and then any of the prep work that would have to be done, possibly related to zoning or things of that nature related to land. The other, as I mentioned, the architects are being interviewed. We anticipate a contract with an architect again this month in May. And then site selection, there's already ten sites that are in the conversation. And again, we'll make more progress through those throughout the, throughout the month of May and June, and then hopefully this summer have something to announce. So, those are the updates on the jail. This next one in your facility, I mean, in your book, it shows it better if you just turn it. I think we showed this last time. This is the way all the various pieces fit in the justice system in Oklahoma County. And then, the jail population, we continue to trend downward in the jail population this last quarter. We were around fifteen thirteen. And again, looking over to the left, you see the, the challenges that were in the jail before, going back to two thousand sixteen, two thousand thirteen, two thousand six, two thousand three, when the population was well over two thousand consistently, as high as twenty-seven hundred. And I'll just note, in two thousand three, the population was twenty-three hundred. That was right after a study in two thousand two called for the creation of the trust that we now have. And then again, in two thousand thirteen, that was after the two thousand nine study of another task force that again recommended that a trust be created. And when you look at these numbers, you can see why there was pressure going all the way back to nineteen ninety-five for a jail trust to be created. As I go through that facility, I do not, I cannot imagine where from today we would have an extra thousand or twelve hundred people in that facility. And so I'm grateful we're not in that situation still. On page five, thank you for teeing this up earlier. So the, the point in time count, the point in time count, Commissioner Davidson, you're right. The numbers that Ms. Garner mentioned in the point in time count are counting differently. The point in time count has very specific numbers to count based on HUD requirements. And so, on January twenty-sixth, as the homeless count was being done all throughout the city, we did it in the jail for the first time in several years. Again, it was an opportunity with Dan Strawn of the Homeless Alliance. I wanna give credit to Jeff, the IT director, for helping us with access to jail tracker and the diversion liaisons that helped us look at that definition and make sure we were following the HUD guidelines. And so, of those that were in custody, fourteen sixty-three on the night of January twenty-sixth, eleven percent of those were homeless, and of those, almost fifty percent were veterans. And so, Judge Stoner of Veterans Treatment Court was very interested in this number. We're gonna rerun those currently to try to identify, 'cause we can, with Jeff's help, we can identify specific individuals that would then be made available to Judge Stoner to determine if they're eligible for Veterans Treatment Court. And then, we've shared this information with the city that's doing their overall one. And then, we welcomed three new members. We're very excited about them, especially District Attorney Behenna and the good work she's already been doing. Commissioner Maun is the selection from the Board of County Commissioners. And then, at the chamber, there's a new CEO there. And then, this is not news for you all, because you guys have already seen this, but we thought it was important that we reported on the new mission, vision, and values that now Director Garner has brought to the table. We thought that was important. So that's a run-through. I'm happy to answer questions.
Just real quick, Jim, to clarify, the homeless point in time contact in the HUD direction in order to count those individuals, those individuals actually have to be in our jail for ninety days in order to be considered for this.
That's right.
That's the HUD standard.
That's the HUD standard.
So, we have clearly have an issue locally with homeless. We had three hundred and three, or whatever your number was that you picked up. And we're not really wanting to address it, because we're wanting to look at people that are there for ninety days. I think that's probably a problem with the way that we look at people, and especially the homeless and the ones that are inside the jail. We can do better. We need to do better. And I know that Ms. Arnall and some of us are working to do something better about that. And these, these individuals would be much better served in a mental health facility, of which I know that the state and ourselves are progressing towards. There was a CJAC subcommittee facility, subcommittee that I addressed last week about the potential of actually buying a mental health hospital that currently exists that has been in operation with SSM for quite a while. But recently, in January, they pulled out of that facility. It would, the thing that I presented to that committee was a list of about twenty-five million dollars for about hundred, anywhere between hundred and forty to hundred and seventy beds. It would also provide us a unique situation, because it would provide us the ability to house juveniles inside of a mental health hospital, because that facility actually has a separate, sound and sight separated facility that is a juvenile facility. That'll also, I think, if I recall correctly, I think it's about forty beds. So, overall, I know that we, as commissioners, we set aside about forty million dollars, I think is what we did, if Stan's corrected. But this entire facility, after our engineer and facilities and everybody else have looked at it, we could purchase it and bring it. There's three floors to it. One floor is not up to the standard that we would need. That entire thing would be about twenty-five million dollars to bring it up to standard and get ready to run. The big thing that it would allow us to do for the jail and for the immediate relief is that this would be up and running in months instead of years. So, this just allowed the ability to talk about that, because many of those homeless people are mental health, and we could probably transition them off of the streets and help them reintegrate into society, should they choose, if we were able to do something with mental health. That we use our current jail as a mental health hospital, and it is not.
Are there other questions or comments for Mr. Tardy Bono? Do I hear a motion to accept his report?
Motion?
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have a second. Those in favor, vote aye. Clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Ted Alexander?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Having received seven aye votes and no nay votes, I declare, I'm sorry, six aye votes, I declare the same to have passed. Okay. Next is item ten, to approve the ARPA sub-recipient agreement that we've done one time before, but this one has been slightly changed, I'm told. So, do I hear a motion to, or are there questions or a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. There's a second. Clerk call the roll.
Is there Toby?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Having received seven aye votes and no nay votes, I declare the same to have passed. Number eleven is a resolution that, that we have had basically at every meeting for a while to request additional funding for the jail. Our funding is inadequate, and this is, this is one more of those. I would, would entertain a motion. Move the resolution. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Clerk call a roll.
We have the biggest liability of the whole county residing in the county jail. And the fact that we're paying the people there, the lowest of any county employee, is just abominable. And we can, the fact that they continue to work for us is so admirable. I cannot believe that. They have a heart for the mission, but we really do need to pay them more so they don't have to worry about when they go home whether they have enough food to eat. We are way underpaying the staff at the jail. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. The voters in session.
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Having received seven aye votes and no nay votes, I declare the same to have passed. Item twelve will authorize our new attorney for the trust with the DA, Erin Etherington. This, this authorizes the quick response and action to all legal issues to, to go to her and for them to, to act immediately. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk call a roll.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Having received seven aye votes and no nay votes, I declare the same to have passed. If there is no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before you do, real quick, Chris still eloquently spoke about a county superstar, and I noticed that she's actually sitting in the back of the room right now. Nikki is the superstar that just applied for a four-million-dollar grant for the jail in the county. So, if y'all give her a round of applause, we'll do that. We appreciate you and appreciate your hard work.
Okay. We do have, we have motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Okay. Clerk call a roll.
Alexander Johnson. No objection. That'd be the order.
There, Toby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Having received seven aye votes and no nay votes, I declare us adjourned.